Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Ermo Town Council meeting for today, October 21st. Meeting's called Order at 6:01. That we're gonna have Councilman Ward do the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation, if you would, please.
If you're willing and able, please stand. Join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're the praying type, please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight to ask for your blessing over this council, over our staff, over the people of Ermo, as we all come together to handle the town's business. In your son's precious name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Next up is the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Reading of the minutes from September 16th, 2025, council meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Reading of the minutes, it's September 25th, 2025, council special meeting. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. October 7th, 2025, council workshop. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Having been appropriately motioned, is there further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. All right. Report of standing. Jim? What do you got for us today?
Mayor, members of council, the Water Walk Public Meeting has been canceled tomorrow evening, and we'll put something out on the website and social media, changing to such. Town hall update, I would give one, but apparently we've been ghosted by the USDA, federal government. They're involved in the shutdown, too, so we've heard nothing from them. We'll let you know as soon as they come back. I'm sure we'll all know when the federal government opens back up. We are aware of several water leaks that are in the town and are working with the City of Columbia to get them repaired. So I know you, council, have been getting some complaints on those and can't help but ride around and see those, so we're working with City of Columbia to get those fixed. And that's all I have, Mayor.
About a dozen of those out there running road, right?
Eleven.
Eleven? Okay.
Well, I'm not counting.
Close enough. I forgot, I'm sure there'll be another one tomorrow. That'll make it a dozen. I do want to mention very briefly of the council special meeting, the reason we had that was to apply for a grant with the municipal association, which we've already gotten the news that we did not get the grant. So I appreciate council's efforts to do that, and I'm not sure what it's gonna take to get a grant from the municipal association, but we'll keep trying. Okay, next up, new in-town businesses, Councilwoman Colton.
We have, we have Shellux Hair at 107 North Royal Tower Drive. We have Shalise Felder Photography Studio at 7777 St. Andrews Road. Coastal, is that Coastal Life Center? At 7588 Woodrow Street.
Be scratching your head now.
Rogers Creations, which is a catering company, at 7522 Woodrow Street. The Polished Pearl, that's at the Salons by J.C. at 8090 Ermo Drive.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Next up is consideration of communications, and with that, we have the pleasure of the first proclamation. I would like council to come on down the front, please. Tonight is my honor, the honor of this council and this town, to, to a life well-lived, and a proclamation honoring the life and legacy of Sammy Mathias. Whereas the town of Ermo gathers in gratitude to remember and celebrate the life of Sammy Mathias, a man whose name became synonymous with hospitality, kindness, community spirit. And whereas Sammy was the heart and soul behind Mathias Sandwich Shop, a place where neighbors came not just for a good meal, but for the warm welcome that Sammy gave to everyone who walked through the door. And whereas Sammy treated every customer like family, knowing people by name, remembering their favorites, and always taking time to share, laugh, a story, or a word of encouragement. And whereas Mathias Sandwich Shop grew into more than a restaurant, it became a gathering place, a cornerstone of Ermo, where generations of residents found comfort, connection, and community. And whereas Sammy's life reminds us that true success is measured not in wealth or fame, but in the love and respect of one's neighbors, and the countless lives brightened by the simple acts of generosity and care. And whereas his legacy will endure in the countless lives he touched, the community strengthened and the tradition of fellowship continues through Mathias Sandwich Shop today. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the town of Ermo does hereby honor and celebrate the life of Sammy Mathias, whose legacy of kindness and community spirit will live on in the stories we tell, the meals we share, and the friendships we cherish. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the town of Ermo to be affixed this 21st day of October 2025. Thank you so much. Say a few words.
Thank you.
Let's get some motion.
Thank you, I'll speak. I told my dad right before he passed that he was a local celebrity, and he goes, "No." And I'm like, "Dad, you really are." And the love and support that we felt from all of you in the last several weeks proved that, proved that. And I know from above, he saw that. So thank you for loving him, thank you for loving us, and keep coming to eat. Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Gabe Butcher here?
Yep.
Come on down, Gabe. Not a great one to follow, but I'm gonna try to be a little upbeat with this one, okay? This is a proclamation designating October 19th to the 2025th, 2025, as Friends of Library Week in the town of Ermo. Whereas the Friends of the Ermo Branch Library raise monies that enable our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. And whereas the works of the Friends highlights an ongoing basis, the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to present. And whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. And whereas the Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and to the betterment of our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town of Ermo does hereby designate the week of October 19th to the 25th, 2025, as Friends of Library Week here in the town of Ermo, South Carolina, and urges everyone to join the Friends of the Library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the town of Ermo to be affixed this 21st day of October 2025. Congratulations. Do you like to say a couple words, please?
I would just say that since we were established in 1989, it's been our privilege and our honor to serve the community of Ermo and to help out the library wherever we can. And we strongly encourage you to come and use the library, and just as an aside, we have a book sale starting later this week.
Another proclamation. This is for the GFWC St. Andrews Women's Club International. Are you all here?
Yes.
Come on down. Yeah, come, this one right here, stand in front of me. Proclamation designating Saturday, September 27th, 2025, as GFWC St. Andrews Women's Club International Day of Service to end domestic and sexual violence in the state of South Carolina. Whereas the General Federation of Women's Clubs, that's the GFWC, for those of you who aren't good with this, is a 135-year-old international federation of women's clubs with more than 63,000 members and is dedicated to community improvements by enhancing the lives of others through volunteer service. And whereas domestic and sexual violence includes but is not limited to verbal, physical, emotional, mental, and sexual abuse, and whereas the GFWC focus areas are diverse and include campus sexual assault, child abuse, elder abuse, human trafficking, intimate partner violence, military sexual assault, teen dating violence, and violence against Native American women. And whereas the GFWC International Day of Service, September 27th, 2025, is a day in which all of GFWC comes together to service to combat domestic and sexual violence. And whereas the GFWC St. Andrews Women's Club is an active club, member of the General Federation of Women's Clubs and is located in Ermo, South Carolina. And whereas GFWC St. Andrews Women's Club will provide Freedom Bags for women who have been sexually trafficked and wish to get off the streets on September 27th, 2025, GFWC's International Day of Service. And whereas GFWC St. Andrews Women's Club has partnered with domestic and sexual violence organizations throughout the Ermo area to produce and provide Freedom Bags for women who have been sexually trafficked and wish to get off the streets. These Freedom Bags being backpacks providing essentials such as clothing and toiletries. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town of Ermo does hereby designate Saturday, September 27th, 2025, as GFWC St. Andrews Women's Club's International Day of Service to end domestic and sexual violence in the Ermo, South Carolina area. to end domestic and sexual violence in the Ermo, South Carolina area. In witness hereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the town of Ermo to be affixed this 21st day of October, 2025. Congratulations on all the work you're doing. spokesperson?
That's me. Thank you for your support and helping us end domestic violence. We appreciate it. Do you like this thing? Thank you.
Okay. Oh, it's one part. Our Small Business of the Month. Taco, where are you? Okay. This is the Town of Ermo, South Carolina, presented to Woodrow Marketplace. If you haven't been there, you're missing some stuff. In recognition of being the Small Business of the Month for the Town of Ermo, October 2025, Taco and Greg, congratulations.
We are super excited. Um, we've only been open for about seven months now. We have over 47 different vendors. We have three vendors here kind of cheering us on. And it's been amazing with, um, antiques, collectibles, and local artists. We've just been thriving, and we cannot wait to make it year five, year 10, year 50. So, thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Good job.
I think I'm winded.
Okay. Next item up. Item E, a presentation from Vote 411 and the League of Women Voters. Come on down. Please give us your name, if you would, please. Not that we don't know.
Good evening, I'm Nicole Sanchez, and with me today are David Smith, Elizabeth Robson, and Jones, sorry. Elizabeth Jones, um, and her husband. Um, we are here today on behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Columbia area. The League is a nonpartisan organization that works to engage citizens in the democratic process. I appreciate you allowing me to speak to council today and to tell you about the 2025 Online Voter Guide found at vote411.org. Um, you can see on the screens, we also have a QR code available so that you guys can scan it and easily access the information on there. Several years ago, the League of Women Voters of the United States, in order to promote voter participation, developed Vote 411, where citizens can find answers about their voter registration, voting rules, and their own candidates. Candidates have received an email from the Columbia Area League of Women Voters inviting them to participate in Vote 411. There was a link, and it invited candidates to fill out their information and to answer questions, many of which have. Thank you to those who have done so already. And if there are some in this room who have not done so or not filled it out completely, we encourage you to do so. After a candidate responds to our invitation to participate, the voter guide has background information on candidates and will include their unedited responses to the questions about current issues and information, and also information on how to contact the candidates. When voters type in their address, they will see all the candidates who have filed for the upcoming races and that they can vote for, and those responses. Participation is completely free, and the candidate information is available now, 24/7, on the website. And it's available throughout the Midlands. Uh, we hope those of you running for reelection and everyone else running for their first time, um, or multiple times, will take advantage of this opportunity to inform voters about your candidacy and, um, put the Vote 411 link where they can find it, where others can find it and promote it so that everyone can see this information, because it's an easy way to get your information out there. League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. We don't endorse or oppose candidates. And in 2022, people from Lexington and Richland Counties visited vote411.org 20,000 times to prepare for the election. The number for South Carolina as a whole was 108,000. And we look forward to everyone's participation and use of this service. And I thank you again for allowing us to speak today. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. This is, those of you who are concerned about candidates anywhere, and your website's tremendous. It's a, it's a great, great source of information. And I'm sure everybody here has put that information in there, because I know I was very deliberate when I ran to make sure I got it in there and got it in there on time, and reread it like seven times before I posted it. So, uh, I just congratulate you all on your work, um, and thank you for providing that information. And don't forget, two weeks from today is Election Day, correct?
Yes.
Go vote.
We're coming up. Oh, yes, and sorry, one more thing. Um, we also brought our directories of elected officials and municipal officials, and those are sitting on the table out front. And it's literally what it sounds like. It's a directory of all the elected officials in Richland and Lexington.
There's a group of young ladies sitting right behind you who are very interested in everything you have to say, so, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next item up, I was remiss at the beginning of the meeting. I wanted to do a special shout-out to these ladies, so I just kind of did. Um, but this is the Ermo Youth Council, which is presented by Dr. Karen Hampton. And, uh, Dr. Hampton, come on down, please. Thank you all for being here.
Good evening. Actually, can I get the young folks to stand just for two minutes? Two minutes, alright, there we go. Um, so this is our inaugural group of the Ermo Mayor's Youth Council. Uh, these young people put in applications several weeks ago. They had to get recommendations. Um, we've worked for several months with, um, Dr. Waldman to create this group and to get them ready for what we would like to think would be, they are the future of our elected officials, those who want to serve their community. So we're very excited to have this group. We have a combination of from ninth to 12th grade. So we have some who are pretty emerging leaders, ready to go um, into the college world in the next few months, and those who we have a little more time to groom at Ermo High School. So, uh, we're super excited to have, to have this group. Part of what they are going to do is to be here. They will be here for, um, several meetings throughout the year. Um, also, um, potentially participating in some of the council workshops, but then to also participate in what's going on in the town, whether it be for, um, for the International Festival or for the Cherry Blossom Festival, for them to become active participants in what is going on not only around them, um, but to be engaged in what they are going to be doing as council, youth council members. Super excited for this opportunity for us, um, for our students, not only to be leaders within the school, but to be leaders outside of our school. Thank you for that.
Dr. Hampton, could you introduce the individuals? Have them come up here and we'll take a picture with them?
Absolutely, okay. We're gonna do like we, yeah, look at them, you see that? See what happens? High school, high school. Alright, so I'm just gonna go down the road. I'll just call you guys up and you just come up, okay? Got it. It's like a little practice for graduation. Jordan Thompson. Joya Evans. Bailey Bachelor. Aubrey Davis. Jayla Weaver. Savannah Stevens. Carish Taylor. I forgot to mention, some of these folks are on our student council as well. So we've got some multiples. Um, Logan Rice. Logan is our student body president. Alexa Alsop. Alexa also serves in student council. Hunter. Hunter Ho, sorry. Hunter's on student council as well. Kennedy Hampton. Kennedy is our junior class president. Abby. Abby Davis. Abby's in student council. And we also have two students who are not able to be with us today. They are participating in our Haunted Theater. Did I get that right? The Haunted Theater that's coming up for, um, for Halloween. I think it's also part of the conversation in the next part of the meeting. So we have Isabella Howe, um, who could not make it, and then Drake Allen. So we have a total of 14 students. Yes, absolutely.
And no one wore their school ID.
Thank you, girls. Thank you, Dr. Hampton. Okay, Community Connections. Dr. Waldman?
Yes. Got a lot of things going on in Ermo. This Thursday, October 23rd, from 5:00 to 6:30, is our National Night Out at Moore Park. This is being sponsored by the Ermo Police Department Community Foundation. There'll be free food, music, vendors, games, prizes, and a lot of fun. On Friday, October 24th, Motown Night will be at the Moore Park in the Prismwood Amphitheater. Moon Cat Daddy will be opening for Jackie's Boy. Tickets are $15. 12 and under are free, free parking, and tickets are available at ermoamp.com. If you're into decorating pumpkins, there's a pumpkin decorating contest that is being put on by Poor House Furnishings. The judging will take place on October 25th. Bring your decorated pumpkins between 10:00 and 3:00 PM to Poor House Furnishings. District 5 of Lexington and Richland Counties is sponsoring Shatter the Myth. This is an informational, uh, evening session addressing facts about alcohol, vaping, and drug use. This is on Tuesday, October 28th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Dutch Fork Middle School. This is for all ages. During this program, adults and children of different ages will have separate activities, and then at the end, they will come together for family discussion and some resource sharing. If you'd like to participate in this, there's a QR code you can scan on this slide to register for the event. There will be a blood drive at the Center for Advanced Technical Studies on Wednesday, October 29th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This is, uh, is actually a fundraiser for the, uh, some of the students at the Center for Advanced Technical Studies. The HOSA Student Organization, and HOSA is the Health Occupation Students of America. They, they can raise money when they get enough blood donations given on this date. You can scan the QR code on this slide to register for a time slot. On Friday, October 31st, in Moore Park, is the Ermo's Trunk or Tree Event. This is being sponsored by the Ermo Events Committee. And we have a lot of events going on with, uh, with respect to Halloween activities. This slide just has a list of about, uh, probably 12 or so events going, starting Wednesday, October 22nd, and running all the way through October 31st. On Sunday, November 2nd, you can take a picture with Santa. This is being sponsored by the, um, Ermo Fire Foundation from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. There's cookies, hot cocoa, and of course, pictures with Santa. If you'd like to, uh, participate, you can register for a time slot by going to ermofirefoundation.org. On November 6th, 7th, and 8th, the Ermo Theater Company will be, uh, performing Much Ado About Nothing at Ermo High School Center for the Arts. Tickets are $10. The QR code is on this slide to purchase tickets. The event, the, uh, performances on the 6th and 7th are at 6:30 PM. The performance on November 8th is at 3:00 PM. And save the date for Little Shop of Horrors, which will presented, which will be presented on March 19th through 21st, 2026. The South Carolina Education Association is sponsoring Read Across America Student Art Contest. This is a contest for students in kindergarten through 12th grade. The deadline for submissions is November 21st. That's a postmarked deadline. The theme for this, uh, contest is From the Mountains to the Sea, Read With Me. If you'd like more information about this art contest, you can go to www.thescea.org slash artcontest. And we have another art contest, the 2025 Songbird Art Contest, being sponsored by the South Carolina Wildlife Federation. Again, this is also for students in kindergarten through 12th grade. This is, uh, happening in partnership with Wildlife Forever and sponsored by Dominion Energy. The deadline for these submissions is November 30th. Uh, scan the QR code on this slide if you'd like more information about this art contest. And that's all I've got for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next item up, uh, presentation by citizens for agenda items only. I see no one signed up, so we're gonna move on. Unfinished business. Item A, second and final reading of Ordinance 2510 to update Chapter 10 of the Ermo Code of Ordinance, the Business License Ordinance, in accordance with South Carolina Act 176. Brought to us by the staff, this is, uh, state law requires that the Business License Ordinance and class schedule be updated each odd-numbered year to go into effect the following year. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion? I would kick this to staff, so that we can, we've had this conversation, and this is kind of cleaning up administratively, correct?
That is correct, and this is a state, um, requirement that we pass this, uh, every two years. And it's been a long time coming. We did the first reading back in June, but in the intermittent months, we've been working on the updates to the Economic Development, uh, Ordinance, which ties in with this. It's also part of the Business License Ordinance. I spoke with Caitlin Cothran, who is the municipal association, last week. She had some questions. I guess some cities have had some issues passing the wrong ordinance somehow. Um, but, no, we're good. They reviewed ours, so we're, we're good to go. Um, but what this does is it just ensures that all the different business types are, uh, collected properly in terms of their profitability so that their, uh, business license fees, uh, go up depending on how their profitability margins work. And so this is the same ordinance that every, um, city and county that has a business license passes statewide.
This is statewide ordinance.
Statewide ordinance.
to structures, can cause public nuisance if they, you know, become overrun with vermin or whatever, so we added that into it at our last, we discussed adding that into it at our last workshop meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion? We've made a motion, so we're ready to vote. Okay, Lisa, will you call the roll?
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Thank you all. Second and final reading of Ordinance 2514 to create an economic development grant program for the recruiting, retention, and annexation of new business into the town limits of Irma. Brought to us by the staff, this ordinance also permits the Code Compliance Inspector to issue municipal summons to businesses that are in violation of the Business License Ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, having been appropriately motioned, thank you. We will, I will kick this one to staff.
Let's talk about the good things of this ordinance instead of like municipal summons. So small businesses major part of town of Irma. Our father, my sister and I, had several car lots in the town of Irma, and Irma is a small business friendly town, and we want to exercise that. So the Business License Senate Program is a grant in which small businesses and with 10 employees or under, brick and mortar, can come in, and their business license will be waived for the first three years, and then year four and five will be at 50%, and then year six will be the full business license. And it gives that opportunity for those small businesses to get up and started. Also with that is the home base, the home base businesses, that if your home base is here and you have a total revenue of over 70 million, that after that, 90% will be calculated on your business license instead of on 100%. So if you're a home base business, come to Irma. If you're a small business, now's the time to crank it up and get going.
Okay. This is second reading. Any questions? All right. Let's, Lisa, will you call the roll?
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Thank you all. Second and final reading of Ordinance 2514 to regulate vegetation, including vines and shrubbery, on residential and commercial properties to protect public safety, property maintenance, and community appearance. Brought to us by staff, this ordinance would limit the size and courage of vines and bushes with respect to adjacent structures, as well as allow the Code Compliance Inspector to issue municipal summons to property owners who fail to abate a nuisance. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 2514 with the addition of Section 3 regarding dead trees.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? You want to add to that, Mark? Clear that up? We talked about it.
Yes, at our last workshop, we discussed modifying, amending this ordinance to include the removal of dead trees off of properties, because dead trees can cause, can be hazardous to structures, can cause public nuisance if they, you know, become overrun with vermin or whatever, so we added that into it at our last, we discussed adding that into it at our last workshop meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion? We've made a motion, so we're ready to vote. Okay, Lisa, will you call the roll?
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, new business. A, discussion approval of revisions of the town wrecker and towing policies, brought to us by the staff. There is a tremendous amount of information in this ordinance, so can you break it down and just kind of give us the highlights?
Yes, Mayor. So looking after the taxpayers for the town of Irma, any wrecker service that is on our rotation for the police department would tow any vehicles for free of charge of the town of Irma's fleet, and also with storage of vehicles for an investigative case as such. Those are the only amendments in that ordinance.
Discussions? Hearing none? Lisa, will you call the roll?
Mr. Ward?
We don't have a motion on the floor, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's no motion.
Do we need to move to approve the revisions?
I don't think we do. Do we, do you want us to make a motion?
I amend the ordinance.
For clarification, this is a policy or is this an ordinance?
An ordinance.
Okay, because y'all both referred to it as ordinance. I just wanted to be sure. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so I can move to approve the revisions to the town wrecker and towing policy as discussed by staff.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Lisa, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Thank you. Next item up, discussion approval of upgrades to the Irma Police Department's weapons system. Brought to us by the staff, this would trade the Irma Police Department's current weapons for a total of 30 Glock Model 45s, reticule systems and holsters for a net price of 26, Brought to us by the staff, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the upgrades.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, having been appropriately motioned, is there further discussion? I would certainly say that the average weapons, I guess, are, all of the weapons are nine years old at this point. Chief, would you enlighten us a little bit on this?
Yeah, this is not uncommon for us to make upgrades, and our biggest point for making this request is for public safety and some of the surrounding agencies have switched over to 9mm, and so for safety purposes, God forbid if something happened, we all need to be on the same page, so that's why we're making this request.
Anything else to add? All right, Lisa, will you call the roll?
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, next item up is presentation by citizens, open, kind of an open forum. Our new town administrator, Jim Crossland, has brought to our attention a reminder about the town's ordinance on appearance by citizens. It seemed, and it was news to me, that we have strayed quite a ways from what our ordinance says, so I'm gonna read the following. Just as a reminder, persons desiring to speak may call the municipal clerk no later than two hours before the meeting to be placed on the meeting's sign-up sheet or personally sign in prior to the beginning of the meeting. Sign-up sheets must contain name, address, and issue matter that residents will address, the same as with FOIA requirements. Each person addressing council will be allowed not more than three minutes to speak. Speakers will always conduct themselves in a civil and respectful manner. They will refrain from use of obscene language, fighting words likely to incite violence from individuals to whom the words are addressed, or other language which is destructive to the orderly and fair progress of the discussion. Speakers will refrain from making comments of a personal nature regarding others. Name-calling in or obscenity is forbidden. Shouting, yelling, screaming is forbidden. The town values your opinion and invites you to address the town council on any town matters. Rules of decorum exist and are used to govern time and manner of expression to ensure responsiveness to your concern. Now, those are just some of the highlights of the ordinance, and we just wanted to put that reminder out there. So, that being said, we're gonna start following those a little closer, and Gerald Gallagher, are you up? You here?
Yes.
Come on down, sir.
Undermark, is that go? Good evening. My name is Gerald Gallagher. My wife Sharon and I are full-time residents at 101 Muskrat Run. My address tonight is just to continue the focus on the water walk situation that's going on. We, along with our neighbors, are directly impacted by the proposed water walk development plan. While we would certainly prefer that there are no additional development along Muskrat Run, especially one the size of Water Walk, we know that's not realistic. We aim to be good and considerate neighbors and want any new neighbors to be prudent and considerate of those that already live here. That begins with the developers. Our primary areas of concern can be summarized as follows. Environmental impact on the cove. We love living on Lake Murray and intend this to be our forever home. We want to be certain that any new large development will not have an adverse environmental impact on our cove and the overall lake at large. We would not only like to understand which state and/or county organizations are involved in the environmental impact study, but also have access to the details of what is discovered along with any mitigation actions. Safety and traffic. Muskrat Run is a paved rural road with less than two lanes. All of us that live on Muskrat Run, the Muskrat Run side of Drew Schultz Road, have no alternate routes. Damage to utility and infrastructure. Paved entrances and turning lanes into the RD3 section from Muskrat Run will jeopardize the stability of our utility services and cause repairs to be more difficult to be conducted quickly. Location of construction entrance. Having a construction entrance on Muskrat Run or Salem Church Road is highly concerning. Large equipment going in and out during the construction process will impede ready access to our homes and introduce a much greater risk of damage to the existing utilities. We strongly encourage that the primary construction entrances be located along Drew Schultz Road. Disruption to privacy. Minimizing RD3 entrances from Salem Church Road and/or Muskrat Run will significantly reduce the spill-over traffic and help preserve the privacy and safety of our homes and properties. In addition, increased boating traffic on our cove, as well as impact to property values having, after having a large rental community adjacent to our homes and neighborhood. Thank you for listening and taking these considerations, taking our concerns into consideration. Thank you to the full council, to the Administrator's Office and staff for your diligence. I hope we gain valuable insight related to our concerns at the next water walk public update, whenever that may be. Please feel free to contact me if you would like to discuss further, and peace be with you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Okay. Next item up is the discussion. We have nothing for discussion, so we're gonna move to executive session. We don't have an executive session. Town council may act on items discussing the executive session after returning from the executive session, but we don't have one tonight, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?